You have the CEO of Bloomington Township. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Boland.
Here.
Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Imig.
Present.
Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Urban. Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Milowambe.
Here. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by trustee Boland, second by trustee Becker. Are we doing roll call?
Yes, please. Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Boland.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Imig.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban. Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Milowambe.
Yes. And next item on the agenda is a report by elected officials. We're going to start with township supervisor Deb Scudder.
Aye. Next month, we'll present the audit and we'll have our auditor here. I wanted to bring up a couple items that you might have noted on the supervisor's report. We are working with PATH now to get on the HMIS system, which is utilized by several agencies for the homeless. And we're going to help them facilitate the intake process with them so that they can utilize their ESG CV funds a little bit more efficiently to get more people into the program. So they did just today, the original date of their deadline was September 30th, but they just got an extension until next year, so July, I believe. I can't remember the date exactly, but there's enough extension. So we'll see how this goes and it gives us a tiny bit of breathing room right now because they were really struggling to make ends meet and see all the individuals that they needed to see and process them through. So we're really excited about the partnership with them and hope we can, you know, serve them to a capacity that as the future holds, will potentially have some administrative costs associated with that for doing the work with them. So right now, we're helping them for a couple months to see how it goes. The other thing is the building improvements. We worked with Farnsworth and got a quote on modifying our building for a warming and cooling center. And the costs were upwards of a million dollars to do that. So I believe that with the library open till nine and being available for access and the Home Sweet Home Ministry is being open till 4:30 throughout the day, I don't believe that kind of an investment is necessary right this moment until we see something change in that regard. I think that it's better if we table that idea and just go with the original plan of our building condition report and finish the projects that are already, have already been approved by the board. Do you have any questions associated with that?
I have, I just have a question. Would there be? It's one of those pay me now, pay me later. If you in the future plan on doing, oh, you know, heating, cooling space, would that cost more than if you did it now?
Well, depending on the supply and demand of the product, I think that's an up in the air. I mean, we certainly are at a high in terms of the material costs. And so we could try to scale it back, but I mean, we were functioning to build a room that is multipurpose. And if you are interested in looking at the plan and revisiting it, I'd certainly, you know, be willing to share that with you. The whole plan was to open up our lobby area, contain a room that was a good size, add one more bathroom in the front lobby, and then have access to access to new flooring, you know, that could be a surface that's usable and more sanitary. And then we would have to have somebody kind of maintain or be on site to watch during after hours. So, you know, we also need additional cameras and security around the facility. So, I mean, I can certainly spend time with you and review it individually if you're wanting to see that that plan in place. So.
But you know, you understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Sometimes it's better to
I do.
do it upfront rather than wait, but you know, I trust your judgment if you think it should.
Yeah, right now, my judgment was that if the other facility, the building facilitates, those around us facilitate this, I think we could downscale it if we had to. We actually could even potential just bring people into our small lobby that we have and do something to help out in extreme circumstances if we need to. So I suggest just holding on.
And trustee Crim.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb. Yeah, you answered most of the questions I had about the warming and cooling center. What was the planned, like, time it would be opened if you had built that?
Well, depending on the RFP would be the next step to go out and we're trying to shoot for that for the next couple of weeks. And then the plan in terms of getting it completed would be about a year.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm talking about like, if you had the one, how, when would it close? Like, the library closes at nine?
Oh, it would still be nine. We would not be considered an overnight facility. That takes a whole other level of service that we don't have the capacity to do. I'd still have to work with Red Cross to determine what that takes to be that kind of. And that's why originally the plan was so, is so extensive is because I was preparing to be that kind of place, which is needed, but you know, the, I don't know how the city is doing with utilizing maybe the Coliseum or whatever. So I don't, I don't have enough knowledge about overnight shelters in case of an emergency. So that preparation is even more extensive than what we're at right now.
And just a quick question then on the PATH arrangement. Sounds to me like what that is, is you're providing administrative support so those applications could be processed more quickly for the ESG grants.
With their, we had held a meeting with caseworkers and their staff and they're really behind in their processing because of the the extensiveness of intake. I mean, every social service agency has to have certain binding document or documents that prove, and we do this on a regular basis and really understand the system. And during COVID, that's what, what we created was a shared application so that everyone can use it. And, you know, we know how to handle those kinds of situations. So if we can help them facilitate that and provide the information into the HMIS HMIS system that's utilized around all of the agencies earmarked for homelessness, then we could just make it happen that much faster with them. So the reason that we were offering our services was because they were on an extreme time crunch. But setting us up in this position could only help facilitate all of the agencies in the community by being on the HMIS system, which is not going to be a problem as I understand it. They're just waiting on the license and they're buying the license for us as gratitude for helping in the extent that we're helping.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great that you are helping and working together to solve the same kinds of issues you're dealing with.
It's a great partnership, certainly.
Okay, sounds good. Seeing no other questions, we're going to turn it over to township assessor Steve Scudder.
Good evening. What I've provided in my report are the list of exemptions provided by the Illinois Department of Revenue for property owners in the city. The main exemption of tax relief would be a homestead exemption. If a property owner lives in their property and is paying the taxes, they are eligible for a relief on their tax payment of a reduced assessment by $6,000. There are several others, returning veterans, disabled, seniors, of course. These exemptions don't, they relieve that property owner, but it just shifts the burden off to others that don't have the same relief with these exemptions. So as we get more and more exemptions, it's hard to see the, the, the way the payment amounts massaged each individual property owners. But individually, an assessment would be reduced and each, each taxpayer would get a little bit of tax relief with one of these exemptions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, could you list the ones that you have to apply for? I know that the homestead is, is you sign up once and, once and done, but some you have to apply for annually.
The veterans exemptions with the disabilities, they need to document service disability, I believe, every year. Senior freezes, they have to document income with the county every year in case their income goes over the threshold. Once you get the senior exemption and you stay in the property, it typically doesn't come off until that property changes hands. So if they, they have the exemption on file for a senior and that name's still on the deed, it'll stay a senior exemption. And the homestead, sometimes they're not on there. If a rental property sells to, they sell a rental property to someone and they move in, sometimes it takes a while for the homestead to get caught up. So it's a good, a good idea to keep an eye on the homestead in case the county does an audit and just takes it away. But typically, that would stay there all the time.
Okay, Councilor, trustee Imig.
Thank you, trustee. Milowambe. I have just a quick follow-up question about the homestead and other provisions. Is, is this something that you're finding our residents are aware of? And or if, if not, how they can navigate this process? Because this seems like it could really help a lot of people reduce their, their taxes.
Well, it, it, it could help them reduce their taxes. But like I said, if everybody had the homestead, everybody's assessment would be reduced by the same amount and the taxes stay the same. So they, they would intend, ideally, it would just create the same level of taxes for each person. But when you see more people are seniors and falling into the senior categories and increasing the amount of senior exemptions or disabled veterans come back and start getting exemptions and those exemptions increase, those exemptions are subtracted from the whole. And then the tax base is leveled out across everybody. So it, it doesn't lose track here, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily reduce a large amount. It's just good to be aware of that tax time because the assessment notices are coming out. And this is just, I guess, a public service to help people understand that there is some relief after your assessment may get increased, that it may be reduced with one of these exemptions if you don't have it already. So.
I see. So it's a way to, to reduce the what is audit, what's determined or assessed as being owed.
Correct.
And understood. And, and do you find that people are aware?
Most, most people are aware of these exemptions. They're not aware when they call and they say, my tax bill went up maybe $200 or $300 for some reason. And then we see that maybe an exemption was removed by the county. So then the county, they can go to the county and they can file and get a refund for that amount that they were owed. But that's not, that doesn't happen very often, but the county is good about paying the refund. Quite right, real quick.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We did not receive any public comment.
Okay, sounds good. And then we'll move to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. See you in 15 minutes. 13.
Okay, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead to and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. And if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible indivisible and just so. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the role?
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milowan.
Here. Next on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We did receive one emailed public comment which was provided to council earlier today that was received by Erica Larkin. And then we have three registered for public comment. The first will be Marty Seigel.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the respect of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceases. Thank you. Marty, please.
Hello, I'm Marty Seigel. I've lived in Bloomington for over forty years. And I recently sent an email to the council expressing my concerns about recent trends in zoning. But I also would like to add these points for you to consider. With the current, every issue has opportunity to be a precedent. With the current trend for absentee owners, especially from out of town, to buy up properties and turn them into rental units in the central city, it would seem to be in the interest of the city to protect our neighborhoods from excess speculation. For one thing, this protects the tax base. Owner occupied, single family properties in my area are often assessed higher, sometimes considerably higher than multi-units of the same size and condition. For another thing, those living in our neighborhoods are usually the ones who report problems and criminal activity. On the other hand, increasing density also increases the number of parking spaces, creating more ground, hard ground or paved lots, which I have been told increases the likelihood of more flooding in our basements. Greater density usually also reduces the amount of green space in our neighborhoods, which of course makes it hotter. The code says the R2 Mixed Residence District, which is what I live in, is intended to accommodate development characterized by a mixture of housing types at a high single-family and low multiple-family dwelling unit density. I hope the council will promote the intent of the code and work to maintain this fragile and important balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Next up, we have Scott Steinling and then to follow, Gary Lambert.
Scott Steinling, Ward five. I realize that the speed hump at the library is to slow cars down, that I do. There was an individual recently that tripped on that speed hump, fell, there was blood all over everything. Fortunately, someone with medical training came out and assisted the guy. You know, we could have had a disaster. I don't know if the city's waiting for somebody to break a neck and really hurt themselves before they remove that or not. We've got the police department right across the road. You know, I can't imagine anyone going flying through there. The fireworks, I understand those are donated to the city, but they've got expenses with additional fire, police. You know, I don't know all the departments that are involved, Parks and Rec, I'm sure. Why not take that money that is spent with the fireworks going on and put that into the cotton picking roads that are crumbling under our eyes? You know, there are places on Parkview Drive that are, the curb is level with the grass. And I think that's criminal. They relayed the street, but sure, they sure didn't do anything to curbs. The ADA standards, they were, in fact, in nineteen ninety, we're at two thousand twenty-two, thirty-two years later, they are still not all the ADA. You know, if I'd be thirty-two years late and paying my property tax, I'm sure my property would be gone by now. And that's basically all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. I'm Gary Lambert. I'd like to thank someone at the city, but I don't know who. I read in the paper last week that there was a auction for piece of foreclosed property for over at, I'm sure I get this right, Fox Plaza West, West or West Market Street Plaza. Evidently, it went bankrupt and there were liens against it for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And they received no bids, which makes you wonder about the value of somebody lending money on that. Then as I read through the paper that said there had been some kind of agreement with a bunch of different properties, not properties, but people involved in the transaction. And they all agreed with something, I'm not sure what, except for the city of Bloomington. Whoever that was that kiboshed that deal, I thank you. I went back, did a scan of the pantograph, looking up some of the history. And there, as I could tell, it was back at least four years. There's an organization called West Market Street Council that was pushing this. And their grandiose plan was demolish the existing buildings and erect a number of new buildings. And the president of that council, a protege of our former mayor, Mr. Renner, wanted to place some of his businesses there. Near as I can deal, see out of all that, that was a pretty sweet deal. He was looking for an endeavor with a bunch of public money, if not all public money, to build this and benefit himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments. I believe we do have some to display, Madam Clerk.
We do. Like to recognize, and if you are present, please feel free to stand. We have Jennifer Aurora, who is appointed to the Citizens Beautification Committee. And Deborah Johnson, also appointed to the Citizens Beautification Committee. Margaret Kraft, Citizens Beautification Committee. Kimberly Howard, Public Safety and Community Relations Board. This is our youth member, which is exciting. Terry Burke, Transportation Commission. And Zachary Zwaga, Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right. Thank you all very much for taking the time to volunteer. We, as the council, do rely heavily on members of those boards and commissions to help us to the work of the city. So we're very thankful for you taking the time to do this and assist us. So thank you and clap once again. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there any item that members of the council would like to have removed or a motion? I will entertain either.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Urban and then second by councilmember Bowlin. So we're gonna do online vote, right? Having so much fun. Was distracted for a second, sorry. So the consent agenda passes are known as to announce. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the program year 2021. CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, as requested by the Economic and Community Development. And I'm going to go ahead and call the hearing to order at, let's say, six thirteen. And I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager, Lee Sin, for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a public hearing that the mayor just did open presentation. I think that we have a PowerPoint by Michael Sennett. He is the Community Enhancement Division Manager for Melissa Hans Economic Community Development Department. Michael, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. This report is just kind of a quick summary of our CAPR, our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I'm just gonna run through the slides, give you a brief overview of what we've accomplished in twenty, program year twenty-one, and some of the challenges that we faced during that year as we head into our, into our new program year. So the CAPR covers the city's twenty twenty-one program year. So that's April first of twenty-one to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And again, like I said, it just provides a snapshot of what we accomplished over in the program year. Next slide, please. Thanks. So in this last program year, we rehabbed thirteen single-family owner occupied units. We provided monies for boiler replacements, serving twenty-one BHA multifamily housing units. We constructed three ramps for three single-family housing units. We were able to demo a deteriorated structure within the city. Six public service projects were funded in this last year. Two public facility improvements, and we were able to get some sidewalk replacement and repair in the west corridor. Next slide. So the total that we spent in twenty twenty-one was four hundred and sixty-one thousand and change. We do have a remaining balance of a hundred and seventeen thousand, which puts our total project expenditures for last program year at five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Next slide. So the breakdown of that category is that we spent two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars roughly on housing rehab activities. The one demo that we were able to get done last year was a little over twenty thousand. Our public services came in at about seventy-five thousand. Public facility and our infrastructure activities, this is where we have our remaining balance of a hundred and seventeen thousand. We have signed off and spent forty-one, almost forty-two thousand of that, but we are waiting to spend the other hundred and seventeen thousand. And then for fair housing, community planning, and section three training activities, we spent a little over fifty-six thousand. And then the admin for our CDBG program comes in at just over twenty-one thousand for the year. Next slide. So three main challenges in program year twenty twenty-one. Continued challenges related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We do have supply chain issues, which puts a higher price on materials and delays the delivery and installation of those materials. And then we do have a limited number of contractors for rehab activities, which continues to be an issue. Next slide. So the notice of public comment period and public hearing, so we opened that on July eleventh. The comment period runs from the twelfth to the twenty-eighth. Obviously, the public hearing tonight. And the CAPR is available. There are three hard copies, one at the hub, one at the Bloomington Public Library, one in our department up on the second, down on the second floor, and then you can also access a copy on the website. And of course, next slide, please. And of course, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you can always reach out to me at the information listed on the screen.
Okay, thank you, Michael. At this time, we will ask anyone from the public that wants to speak to come forward. Individuals will be allowed to speak only once, and we ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less so that we can get through everyone that desires to speak. Is there anybody registered?
We did not have anyone registered to speak.
Okay, sounds good. I don't have to cut off anybody then. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, we have two. So let's go with councilmember Ward and then councilmember Crable.
Yeah, I'll wait till Mr. Sennett gets to the microphone. Thanks for the overview. Just a couple of questions. How many structures are on the list for demolition? Are you able to say?
Right now, I know that we have one that we are in a step-two process with Strong Communities, funding a different section of funding that we have. And then I believe we have two more on the list to get done before March of next year. So three total.
Okay. Any idea, anything you can speak to as to why those weren't able to be completed in the past year or?
Essentially, finding someone to take a, take a structure down has been more challenging. And it just takes time running through. If it's, if it's in a historic area, we have to apply for the funds. We have to list out all the tax information. This stuff all has to be reviewed. It has to come back to us. It has to go through the proper zoning and boards. And so it just is a process that takes time.
Okay. And then one last question. You mentioned ongoing COVID challenges. What are some of the challenges that you face?
So most, I think, with COVID are supply chain issues, installation issues. So it puts us behind schedule. Windows is a big one right now. There's a six-to-eight month delay from ordering windows to the times that windows come in. So what happens there is that we have the program year, the funds have to be spent within a certain amount of time. But now windows and other materials are causing us to not be able to complete within the timeframe. So we're working our best to get applications approved faster on our end, to get them approved from the funding agencies faster on our end, to try to get things started so that we can order windows first, work on the project, and then right when we wrap up, we're getting, we're getting those windows. But I would say it just was, from a logistics standpoint, it was just a little bit of a bigger issue than what we anticipated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crable and then Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Michael, for that presentation and everything you in the department does to use these funds that are very important to the community. Could you remind me when the year ends for CDBG funds?
Current or last?
Yeah, like is it in like June first or is it in December thirty-first?
No, it follows our program year, so our same count. So it is April, yeah, same city count, April thirtieth.
Okay, so May first. So we've had a little over two months in the new year. How is it going so far in the new year?
It's getting started.
Okay.
You know, like I said, we we carried over a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from last year that we're working on spending. We can't carry over too many funds based on a percentage. So we're looking to spend down what we can as fast as we can. So that is our focus now while trying to make sure that we aren't in this position come this time next year.
Now, it does look like you have, even if you spend the hundred and seventeen thousand, you do have a little bit more that's that is not being spent. Is that, or is my math wrong?
I think it is. It does add up. We do carry over a little bit because the agreements with CDBG aren't always finalized by the new program year. So to get things started, we do carry over a small percentage from year to year to pay those invoices when they come in, just in case there's a couple of month lag between signing agreements with the government.
Wanted to ask about this section three job training program.
Yep.
Could you remind me, remind us how much is allocated for that? How many people are helped and and is if that's something that we could do more of? Is that something that's not as much affected by COVID?
Yeah, so the total for that is ten thousand dollars. There is a priority given to housing, housing authority residents. So we turn those monies over to BHA for job training programs. As far as looking into and doing more, I'm sure there's always an opportunity to do that. There is no, you know, administration, our our admin is kind of maxed out for where it is. That we want to keep that percentage low so that we can put more monies into projects around the city. I'm sure that we can always look into what other funds are available, but as of right now, we've not done that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Michael, for coming and speaking with council this evening. I noticed in your report, you talked about a shortage of contractors. Is that just because of the competition in the community? And I wonder, do you, is there any strategy that, you know, you are thinking about that might help you pick up more contractors to do the work that you're trying to do?
Yeah, so I think a couple of things. One, contractors are busy right now. And when you're looking at the size of projects that the city can offer for single family rehab, it doesn't match what they can make on a sixty thousand dollar kitchen reno or redoing multiple bathrooms in the same in the same house. It's faster work. They get paid faster. Our structure is also a little bit different where some of the upfront cost has to go out of the contractor's pocket and then we reimburse at the halfway point and the finish. I think also there was, I think there's also some misconception that is part of our plan to maybe clear up around the city about prevailing wage, what that looks like. So I'm new to the city. I've only been here for about ten months. So just kind of getting the finger on the pulse of what's happening, establishing some relationships with contractors and just being more present in the community so that they know that the city, you know, has an open door and wants a wants a working relationship. And I and I don't know that that didn't happen in the past, but I can't speak to that. So my plan is simply just to be more out active and be marketing our programs and the benefits they have for the community and our residents.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Emig and then Walsh.
Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned challenges, you know, with the supply chain in particular and COVID nineteen, and we all feel that. But I wondered if you could speak to needs that you have identified because you are in a position to see sort of the layers of need in the community. And this is just your point of view, but what do you think the greatest needs are right now?
Yeah, um, you know, I think they're the same needs that kind of always have been, right? We are, we are looking at rehabilitation because we want people to age in place. We want to provide funds for those who can't or don't necessarily have the fund for funds for general upkeep of their home and maybe haven't over the course of ten to twelve years. So the houses fallen farther in disrepair. The idea is to invest these monies into a community so that the that we are raising the the aesthetic, we're raising the bar, we have the expectations that Bloomington as a whole is a great city to live in, right? So I I don't know that my assessment is any different than what it would have been or that it would be in any community. These needs are always present. It's my hope, though, that we can also use our funding to do other things around the city, which are also needed, that we're not focused just on one type of funding or that we're just focused in one area as well. So but that's a conversation for a future, a future time.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And I wanted to go back to council member Crables' idea and and questions about the section three job training and then kind of tack on with council member Crumpler, I, job, well, his lack of of contractors. And what about an idea of of partnering with the current contractors to do job training so that they can get more employees? And it would help your, it it could help out with your contractor shortage and it could also piggyback on and do some additional job training for people. And that type of idea, kind of think outside the box there on that.
Yes, so I think that's a valid point. I don't know that the lack of contractors for the city or the county exists. There are a lack of contractors that are actively working with the city. So yes, I I think that looking into those funds, seeing if there's an expansion there, thinking outside the boxes is not an alien concept to to myself or anyone who works in the division. So I I think that's an avenue that we could move towards. I I'm also just looking for what we can do now to spend the funds that we have now. So it's it's a dual path, right? We can explore this option, but I need to find ways to spend these funds in a timely fashion where we don't carry over so that we don't anger HUD, so we don't have any penalty, so that we're making sure that we're also turning over and that we're providing the services to neighborhoods that we said we were going to in our annual action plan. So those two paths, I would say, run concurrent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bolin and then Ward.
Yeah, I I'm probably gonna send you some emails with the questions that I have. But I just wanted to mention that in your report that we received in the packet, there was a lot of talk of different groups that you work with and all that. Do you, do you really feel that there's a sense of collaboration and working with the common goal?
So I I guess I'll go back and say ten months is not enough time for me to have been. I I have started to wade in those waters. I would say I'm not actively swimming. So there is always room, again, for our department to be more interactive, to be more collaborative. I I think if I'm if I'm to offer a sort of, if I'm if I'm asked to take sort of a cursory glance and to make an assessment, I think there's a lot going on in the community. I think that there are a number of organizations that are at or above capacity. I think the need right now far outweighs capacity of some of our organizations to do, which, in my opinion, and historically throughout my career, has created other organizations reinventing the wheel, which now you have three or four organizations doing the exact same thing, but none of them are doing them maybe to the best of their ability, when if if the one could have increased capacity, maybe that would have been.
Sure, that makes sense.
So I will say it is a goal of our division to be more active, to be out in the community, to have a finger on the pulse of what it is. So again, that we can talk about potentially diversifying our portfolio to invest in different ways that still achieve all of our goals.
Well, you're juggling a lot with seven grants to manage.
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ward.
Can you talk about what kind of limitations there are that, you know, as you talk about needing to spend these funds? What kind of things would limit you from spending them on such things as wading in the waters of people's flooded basements?
Yeah, so you know, again, with HUD funds, CDBG funds, it has to meet a national objective and the people who apply for the funds have to qualify. So if those two things don't happen, those monies can't be spent, right? So I would say, I I would say our limitations are, we are all new to our position. The grant, the grants department has, is is all sort of new. Three people in that division, including myself, that have been here for less than a year. We are in the midst of creating new policies and procedures where some did not exist before. We are also trying diligently to, if you can imagine, three things happening simultaneously, right? We are addressing issues from previous. We are trying to continue to move the program forward and then we're dealing with with challenges such as carryover, supply chain and the remnants of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So not to make an excuse or to stand up and make an excuse, but I I think that's a lot for any division to handle. I I think, I I think Joni and and William both handle it very well and we are in the process of sort of handling all of that while moving forward and trying to be proactive, where I think from day one, we've we've been predominantly reactive.
So I don't mean to to, you know, point a finger at all or or to sound like it it really genuinely was trying to get some information about what might stand in the way of that.
Sure.
So what I'm hearing you say is that perhaps you're not even sure what might stand in the way of that. And if, I mean, in terms of like there being any rules that would prevent us from from doing this, not not capacity, but.
I'm sorry, so are you asking specifically now about an overheads, like about about flooding?
Any of that related to to the folks who a little over, well, a year ago, were standing at that very spot saying, my life has been turned upside down by this. And I'm at, you know, you're saying, we've got money we need to spend. And I had constituents and neighbors who would be happy to help you with that. And I'm just, I'm just saying, at this point, I would put a plug in for that if there is any possibility of that.
Sure, and I I appreciate the plug. Again, national objective, qualifying people, can't just spend the money because there's a a need. It has to. It has to meet criteria. So yes, while I I definitely appreciate and understand, and and I I came in right about the time that all this was going down, we did establish the overhead sewer program a little bit separately. A rehab specialist who is is also under me in the same division has been working on and handling that. Stat wise, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I know that they are addressing those issues now, so.
Any further information you can give about those criteria about eligibility and and national objectives? I would appreciate. I don't expect you to be able to pull it out of the air right this second, but
Sure, yeah.
I would look forward to knowing, knowing what that is.
So it it is readily available on our website and I don't mean to make it, you know, but you can always go to our website and we have links to HUD guidelines, HUD, all of that stuff, so.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you very much, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and it is now six thirty five. And we are going to move to the regular agenda and we'll start with item nine A. A consideration and action to approve a contract with ASME Local six ninety nine, who represents workers at the Bloomington Public Library, as requested by the Bloomington Public Library. And I am going to turn it over to city manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very brief comment before I turn it over to Jeannie Hamilton, the library director. This is just another opportunity for us to bring forward to a council and the community, the type of relationships that we have with our employees that are represented by unions. Jeannie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to present you with this tentative agreement that was ratified by the Library Workers Union on June thirtieth and approved by the Library Board on July nineteenth. It just some of the highlights, it is a three year agreement. It does set the groundwork for future expansion of operating hours of the library. It reflects market adjustments for our employees that are closest to the minimum wage and for positions that are challenging to hire and three percent increases for others. It does have a one time bonus for employees with ten or more years of service. It adds a floating holiday for Veterans Day, but this leaves the library open. Increases annual vacation carryover that employees are allowed to do. Adds sick leave for part time employees with two or more years of service. Adds a wellness day off, is staff complete wellness requirements, improving the health of their employees. Adds parental leave of twenty workdays and removes accelerated sick leave accrual in the first year of employment. We do plan to relieve strategic vacancies this year to offset unbudgeted increases. And we really hope that future EAV increases will absorb the increases in the future years of the contract. But we are confident that operational budget management will accommodate any differences that we don't realize in that.
Thank you, Jeannie.
I would have moved, I would move to approve agenda item nine A, the proposed agreement with Local six ninety nine.
I second.
Okay, second by council member Emig. Question? Okay.
I heard you use the word sick leave buyback. And could you explain again?
I I did not, I apologize if I misspoke, but we did not do anything with sick leave buyback.
Okay.
A few years ago, we addressed in the sick leave buyback issues that we have. It perhaps vacation carryover.
Yeah.
So vacation carryover is just each year you have to use your vacation within that year and then they they used to be able to carry over only twenty four hours if they didn't use it. And we increased that to forty hours that they can carry over.
Thank you for the clip.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second, correct? Yes, so if you go ahead and vote online. Okay, thank you. The item passes are no need to announce. The next item of on the agenda is item nine B, consideration and action on a resolution establishing a framework for the use and expenditure of American Rescue Plan Funds for the city of Bloomington, as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to city manager Gleason for a introductory remarks and presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and to the community. This is a quick, very brief conversation regarding the American Rescue funds that we received. And actually, we're in receipt of the entire nearly thirteen point four million dollars from the federal government. As a community might recall, we had a presentation at the Committee of the Whole in May where we as a community, you know, like many communities, they've taken different pathways to include the community and how the funds could and should be spent. Ours in the May Committee of the Whole presentation was to present to council the idea of adopting a resolution that had three categories, broader categories, that we felt fit the conversation that council members had had and the community input that we've received. And what we included in this was three categories. One was socioeconomic, one was economic development and one was infrastructure broadly categorized. The idea is that each individual product, project under each one of these categories is always going to be brought back to council for approval and definitely has to fit the appropriate guidelines to use the ARP funds. For us, it was very obvious that the community and the council held a very strong opinion that infrastructure should be funded the most. And in fact, what was presented and it remains the same tonight in this proposed resolution. And in fact, what was presented, and it remains the same tonight in this proposed resolution, is nine million dollars of the nearly thirteen point four million dollars will be obligated, not obligated, but will be used for infrastructure during the timeline that we have to expend these funds. That's nearly seventy percent of the total funding amount that we received from, from the federal government. The remaining two categories, socioeconomic and the economic development categories, will split in half the remaining roughly four point four million dollars. And so that would be, I think the number is two million one hundred and ninety-three thousand and some change for the two individual categories. So that's what's before council tonight. I know that there has been a fair amount of council or peer conversations regarding this topic. This is a single resolution capturing these three broader categories with those funding amounts. And again, just to repeat myself, every individual project has to be brought back to council for approval. And then also, you know, this is a resolution. And if we find that there is a higher priority or a change in the vision by the elected officials, we can make that change. But like many communities, you know, we, we were asked and the expectation by the community to show what value are we placing on these funds that we receive from the federal government? So that's what you're saying tonight in the form of this resolution. Something else to share is that we have nearly five million dollars. That's already either been truly expended or is obligated of the thirteen point four million dollars. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars recently from, you know, for the Carl Mobile Health Unit. That would, if this is passed, would fall into the socioeconomic category. And then on the infrastructure side, we have five million dollars that's either been expended or obligated. And that number could be seven million of the nine million that we are dedicating to infrastructure. And the breakdown of that very quickly is the Locus Colton combined design work that we've talked about, the hydraulic modeling, design work that we've talked about. And then council placing a high priority on asphalt and concrete on our sidewalks and our roads in the community at the local level. We've already have project budgeted of nearly seven million dollars. Council wanted an additional two million dollars in this construction season twenty-two, and that's going to come from the ARP funds. Council has also talked about doing an additional two million dollars of the ARP funds for construction season twenty-three for asphalt and concrete. And that would bring that infrastructure number up again roughly, but it's close from five million up to seven million of the nine million that is being dedicated to the infrastructure category. I'm gonna turn this over, Mayor, to you and council to see if there's any additional questions. But this truly is a result a couple of months after the Committee of the Whole meeting in May of this year. Thank you.
Sure, council, is there a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Emig. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Becker?
I'm gonna make you remember it. So two questions, and I think these are just clarification for everybody. I think people in the council have heard these, but some of the monies that you mentioned, City Manager Gleason, were already budgeted. So when we say we're going to use the, these funds for those projects, do we guarantee that the budgeted funds are still available in that same category? So if we're taking ARPA money and putting it into roads, which relieves budget money here, are we also guaranteeing that we can still use that, that we are going to still use that budget? Does that make sense?
It does. This is not a takeaway from anything else that was budgeted or forecast to be budgeted. We're truly treating this, and this was at the council's direction, that this was an unexpected opportunity from the federal government, and this is extra to anything that we currently would fund.
Thank you. And the one other question, and I think it comes up from in relation to Michael's comments with the CDBG stuff. And that is, if we get into these three buckets and we cannot find something that can be approved in one of the three categories, I don't want money that's sitting in that category to not be able to be used such that we would forfeit it. I want to make sure that there's an opportunity to take that money and shift it elsewhere outside of the three buckets or across buckets if we don't have enough that, again, will qualify, if that makes sense.
It definitely makes sense, and that definitely will not happen. Something else that I should have shared is on the socioeconomic and on the economic development side, staff are currently working on a template, you know, sort of a guideline similar to CDBG, where applications can be made to use these funds. This is something that staff are working on, and while it won't need council approval, council has definitely made it clear that they want to see something like that for these two different categories. We plan on making a staff presentation on what the final product or application or template looks like. And that will either be at the Committee of the Whole in August or possibly September, but no later than September. There's a fair number of considerations regarding this, and we want to make sure that we've got it right.
Sounds good. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you.
Montney, and then Crable.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to go back to something that Councilmember Becker was, was talking about there and guaranteeing that the, you know, that, you know, we've got this, this thirteen-plus million dollars here and, and making sure that, you know, push comes to shove, that, you know, we were actually able to use all the funds. And what I would like to see in an ordinance like this, and, you know, where we've got the nine million for infrastructure, the, the two point one and the two point one for, for the other two items, I would actually like to see in the ordinance, I'm gonna use the term a drop dead date. It says if we haven't spent the money by this time, we automatically shift it to, you know, so using the, the economic development. If we haven't spent the money by, you know, this date, it's automatically shifted to infrastructure and, and something like that, that we automatically shift the money if it's not spent. And I think that would give some encouragement to, to maybe spend it on the economic development. And then, you know, it is there and we know it can be used immediately. And it kind of puts that emphasis that, hey, it is already allocated because we know we have to make sure the money's allocated. And so, and then my second point that I would like to see, and, and Mr. City Manager, you touched on it with the staff putting together guidelines. Too often, we see government bodies, and whether it be councils or, or general assemblies or, or federal legislatures advocate, advocate their duties and not, I'll say codify those guidelines. And that's one thing that I've heard from constituents, one thing that I've heard from, from, from city, city leaders and business is that they would like council to have more input in codifying and putting into ordinance the guidelines. And so honestly, before, I think we should vote on something like this and saying, you know, we're gonna spend this money on economic development and this money on socioeconomic opportunities. I'd like to see those guidelines of, you know, these are, these are the ten thick criteria you must meet in order to, to qualify for the funds. And I'd like to see that in there. And then my last point would be the city infra, the, the infrastructure. We, we, we've, you know, our Public Works Department has identified that we have an issue with getting contractors here to, because of our Bloomington preferred, the preferred part of the ordinance. That should be part of this, that any of the money we're spending out of this ARPA funds for, you know, for, for infrastructure, we should waive that portion so that we can get the work done. We aren't gonna get the work done if we, if we have to solely rely on those here locally. We've, we've got to reach out to other communities, and we've got to reach out to, to be able to reach out to other contractors in order to get the work done. So I think it's important that we waive that, and I think it should be part of the ordinance. So let's put it all in together. Let's get, let's, let's plan it and do it and, and get it all done, all the parts in there together. So, thank you.
Sounds good, I think Councilmember Montney was next.
I would just like to reiterate a couple of the points that were made, and it goes back to the presentation earlier, which was really good. And for a new person, you seem exceptionally competent, so thank you very much for that. But the national objective in qualifying people, there's a lot laid out in this final rule that we were provided from the Department of the Treasury. But still, there's a lot of subjectivity in terms of meeting linear connecting point for approval. So I think that stopgap, just, you know, directionally, to understand if we reach a date and we don't have all the money spent, can we ensure that it goes over to sewer infrastructure specifically? As we do have neighborhoods in Bloomington whose combined sewers still have not been funded to, to be decoupled.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of points I'd like to make. You know, I, I do think that, you know, we have the opportunity, as Tim said, to be flexible. You know, I, I think if we have some kind of stopgap for infrastructure, it's just gonna all be, be infrastructure, right? Because we can all think right now what to spend it on, so why not just spend it? But we have other needs, you know, I think people, you know, would rather have a roof over their head and, and not have a great street, you know? So I think we need to be splitting this up. And, and I, I do think we may be, be putting too much money in, in infrastructure, but, you know, I would vote for, I will be voting for this. So a question as I'm talking here. What is it looking like right now, Tim, with regard to spending that extra two million dollars for this year? Oh, I need it.
That's something that council made it very clear to myself and the Public Works Department that you wanted an addendum to the project work that was going to occur this construction season. That will be let here very soon. And we do expect to do two million dollars of additional work, the ARP funds, this construction season.
Great, thanks, Tim. I just kind of looked through the, the document from the Department of Treasury, kind of the final report or, or guidelines. I wanted just to note that some of those requirements include assisting with applying for services, which I think goes back to the Community Navigator position we discussed last week. Also, on page one hundred fifty-three, but programs or services to support long-term housing security, including development of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. So I hope that involves doing things to encourage affordable housing developers, giving incentives, other things that we can think of. Another thing it mentioned on page one fifty-four was giving housing vouchers and assistance relocating to neighborhoods with higher economic opportunity. What I see that as meaning is that right now, you know, the, the HUD provides vouchers, Section Eight vouchers that allow recipients to pay for rent. Typically though, rent is higher in, in, in some parts of the city versus others. And something like this would allow people to live in all parts of our community, not just some. And then finally, I'll mention that, you know, we, I do believe we have a food desert, both, I don't always say the historic West Side, but also just the West Side in general, including War Two, that we can address with this. So just, I know everybody's thinking about these things, but those are the things that I saw when I reviewed the document. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, Crumpler, and Bolin.
Yeah, thank you. City Manager, I would really, really appreciate it if, when we get the presentation on, on, you know, the applications and so forth, that included in that will be some real emphasis on how, how we will market the availability of these funds to organizations and people who are interested in addressing socioeconomic and development needs. Because my, my biggest concern with what Councilmember Walsh is proposing and, and Councilmember Montney is also talking about in terms of a drop dead line for, you know, things automatically get shifted over into the infrastructure bucket is that those organizations that, that are coming, potentially coming to us to tap into the socioeconomic bucket are having to pretty much start from scratch. It's not like they're walking up to the city and saying, here's this big budget line that already exists, as in for roads and sewers and infrastructure. And here's this, this city system that's already in place to do this. They're having to make this up from scratch. And so if we don't market the availability of these funds, I think what we're doing is setting ourselves up for the very strong likelihood that nobody's gonna know to tap into them. And we're gonna just have another Rust Grant, for example, where this money sits there, or the overhead sewers for that matter, and the money sits there and nobody knows about it, and nobody can tap into it. And so I hope that we can, we can include in whatever application and process we create a serious effort to market this, rather than just sort of allow it to, the clock to tick out, and then it goes to, to potholes. I, I need potholes fixed. I believe in potholes being fixed. I don't think potholes are nearly as important as the combined sewers. And, and that needs to come to the top of the list before potholes. But all of that can't just take over because we can, we can put every penny of our budget toward potholes for the rest of our lives, and we will still have potholes. And we will still have hungry people. And we need to address both of those things. End of sermon.
Okay, thank you. Before we go any further, I think we're gonna need a little bit more time.
I'll make the motion to extend for fifteen minutes. I'll second, ten minutes?
Yeah, I think ten is better, and I like, I will encourage everyone not to use all ten. Is it, so is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Urban, so just voice vote.
Yeah, just real quick, Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, so we have ten more minutes. And if you've already spoken once, let's, if we could, just gonna give others a chance to speak and, and then we can move to the next topic. Trying to be polite. Councilmember Crumpler, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I was really interested on page twenty-one of the federal guidelines. It says technical assistance, counseling, or other services support business planning. And I'm hoping that in the economic development category, it, within this category, we could include, what could be included was supporting new development opportunities. For example, a grocery store on the Bloomington's West Side if there were an appropriate interest from a qualified developer with a well-developed business plan. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolin, and then last but not least, Councilmember Emig.
Well, first I want to ask Melissa, are you taking notes? She always, I'm kidding. Yeah, I do, I do think this framework. yeah, I do, I do think this framework is, um, the best way to go. I went back and looked at the, um, YouTube video from the, uh, committee, the whole. And there was a lot of good input. I think it was repeated tonight, um, regarding the, um, costs and the deadline, uh, according to the final rule. The money needs to be obligated by 2024. So when we get into that budget cycle, previous to that, we can evaluate. For that matter, we can have a annual report brought before us, the status of the ARPA to address some of the concerns over here, whether or not it's being spent at a fast enough pace. And then of course, it has to be spent, um, by 2026. So we have a lot of flexibility time-wise here. And this is a resolution Tim mentioned. This is not an ordinance. This is not put in stone. There's gonna be flexibility moving forward as needs come up. And the whole idea, council is presenting the what or approving the what tonight, which is the umbrella. And then staff does the how, which get put together some kind of application, look through the final ru- rule like Alderman, uh, Crumpler said and said, oh yeah, these are good ideas. These are good ideas. Let's try to promote this. So I think that, um, I'm in favor of this. I just wanted to make some comments about the comments that I had heard up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Emig.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was going to, to comment on the 2024, 2026 timeline as well. I think that there's a built-in, um, deadline about, about using the funds. But more importantly, the, um, framework allows us to create the next step, which I think was really important that you brought up, Alderman Walsh, that we need, we do need the guidelines and we do need a process for making those decisions. But this framework creates the, an opportunity for that next step. Cause now we know the categories within which those proposals can be developed and vetted. And I don't want to determine that if we don't spend on, um, we don't spend all the funds by X. I don't want there to be a foregone conclusion that we're then going to direct money in some other way. I, I want us to, to be deliberate and intentional about, about how we make those decisions. So I, I am in favor of this framework and I appreciate the work you've done on it.
Good. Thank you. Uh, and I, I think this, this is everybody that we, we have.
I just have one quick question.
Sure, very, very quick.
Quick question. Uh, the dates, the timelines, the 2024 and the 2026. The 2024 for allocating the funds. And so if after that point, it's like, wait, you know what? We've allocated too much here and not enough here. Can we reallocate that in 2025? Okay, thank you.
No, we can't. Uh, the, the funds truly have to be obligated in their entirety by 2024. And as I was listening, uh, Alderman Walsh, uh, to your, uh, comment and then listening to everybody else's, I wonder as i- if this might satisfy, uh, what you proposed and some others supported, that every time that there is a project, uh, that the use of ARP funds would be brought forward. I would, I would document a running total of how many of the individual category funds have been expended. So you're going to know along with an annual report like Alderwoman Bolin was suggesting, uh, we're not going to get to a point to where these funds are not obligated, you know, to your initial, uh, comments, uh, Alderman Becker. So maybe that satisfies that I capture a running total and each of the project, uh, you know, projects that come back for council approval.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think we're ready to vote.
Yeah, just as a reminder, we have, uh, Councilmember Bolin, uh, made the motion and it was seconded by Councilmember Emig.
Okay, the item passes. There are no days to announce. Thank you. We're going to move to item nine C, consideration and action on ordinance amending chapter two, section 13, setting the boundaries of the city's nine wards as requested by the city clerk department and the administration department. And I'm gonna turn it over to, um, City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a follow-up to the, uh, presentation that was made, uh, last week at the committee of the whole. Staff presented, uh, two, uh, I'm sorry, four total maps. But out of that conversation, uh, two maps appeared to, uh, become, uh, the top choices. If everyone recalls, uh, map number two, uh, staff, uh, map number two seemed to be the one that captured the most support by council, followed by staff map number three. But at the end of the conversation, there was a request to, uh, bring back an additional map. And that's what we've done and that's what's gonna be discussed tonight. So that's going to be, uh, staff map number five that will be, uh, brought forward. And, uh, we look to, uh, council, uh, if they're able to, uh, decide on one. Uh, and if not, we can always, uh, bring this back, uh, with additional follow-up staff work for, uh, the August 8th, uh, council meeting. Uh, but I wanted to take a moment real quick to, uh, share, uh, just the players. I know our city clerk, uh, Leslie Yocum was one that presented last week. Uh, and I know that she mentioned, uh, several times, uh, Troy Olson, uh, our GIS person in, uh, uh, public GIS employee and public works, just an amazing job on the part of what he's done. And if I had known that he was not going to be here, I would have made sure he was going to be here because he needs to be, uh, recognized and pointed out, uh, to the community. Uh, but the deputy city manager oversaw this entire project, uh, so, uh, appreciate, uh, his efforts. And then obviously, there's not, uh, too much, uh, happens at the city that Jeff Jurgens isn't involved in as well. But Billy, uh, don't know if you have opening comments or should I turn it straight to, uh, Leslie? Okay, Leslie, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. And, uh, keep Troy in your thoughts. He hasn't been feeling well or we were gonna have him here, so. Um, but we will pass that on to him. Uh, so I'm not gonna go through everything that we went through last time. I know through, that we've been through it publicly a couple of times now. Uh, so just as a reminder, uh, we're looking at really three factors, two that come to us from the statute and then one from case law. So compactness, contiguousness and population deviation. Um, the city manager nailed it when he said exactly what we're gonna do. We're, um, just gonna briefly look at two, three, and then I'll highlight five, which is that combo plan. And then we also did, uh, the overlays that you requested. And so we'll look at the comparisons of each of those. And then as you've seen in the packet, um, we included three different versions of the ordinance. So that if at the end of the presentation, uh, you are inclined to approve a plan, then, uh, the motion will just include that, uh, particular plan's name, uh, moving forward. So, um, if we could have the next slide, please. All right, so here we have plan two. Um, the only thing I'm really gonna kind of focus on is the upper right-hand corner. So the northeast and then the southwest where we see, and this one is horizontal. Um, and we see in the top, uh, corner, this is the one where Ward three had 8526, which allowed us to bring together some larger, uh, neighborhoods and then also consider future growth. Uh, switch to plan three, please. Uh, the difference in this plan is that the, the southwest is shown in that vertical, uh, configuration. And, uh, plan, the upper, uh, right-hand corner switches toward three where it goes to 9102 and divides, uh, some of the larger neighborhoods. Plan five. All right, so this is the new plan. And the really thing, the things to focus on are again, uh, the bottom left. So the configuration of wards one and two there, we've got it in the vertical, which, um, seemed to be kind of that preferred look. That was the one that was carrying over from plan three, if you were a fan of that one. And then the plan five has, uh, the same configuration as plan two, which was the favored, uh, one that considered pulling together the neighborhoods and the future growth. Uh, so this is the new one. Um, all of the other layouts are the same. So some of the factors we had pointed out that we tried to do, uh, pulling the downtown area under a single, uh, primarily a single council person, uh, and then utilizing Veterans Parkway as that clean line, um, as well. And just as a reminder, the hashed, uh, precincts are the ones where a council member lives. Um, and we will continue on, please. Thank you. Go one more. All right, so here are the overlap maps. Um, this one, as you can see at the top, this is plans two and three. And really, as we were going through them, I kind of pointed out the, the big things. So, um, plan two would be shown, um, or is shown if you look at the legend in the top right. Uh, plan two is outlined with the thick black, uh, the precincts and their population totals are in red. Uh, and then these are all the changes from plan three. Uh, so this particular one, it impacts, uh, the, let's see, so we've got the upper right-hand corner. There's the difference because of that, uh, change that we talked about, uh, with the one considering the growth for Ward three. And then the bottom right is in the vertical. And I'll leave it there for just a second and we'll keep going and we can come back to these. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so when you compare two and five, and you'll see the same on the next slide. The only difference is that, um, bottom, uh, left-hand corner. We can go to the next slide, please. And here, the difference between three and five is the upper, uh, right-hand corner. So truly, five is a combination, um, of, of the two, um, other maps, the two and three. You're basically just keeping the vertical on the, uh, bottom. And you're able to, uh, keep the growth in the neighborhoods together, uh, when looking at the upper right. If we could, uh, I think probably best is to go back to plan five. And then, um, if you have any questions, please, we can switch to that.
Okay, so let's see. Okay, Councilmember Becker.
So, um, a couple of comments here. First of all, I, just one quick one, that the process again was awesome, in my opinion. We took input from the public. We took input from many, many versions of maps from you guys. And then also the discussions. So this is about the most well-vetted thing that I've seen in a while and I really appreciate that. Because of that, I just make a motion that we go to number two and be done.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so council, uh, motion by Councilmember Becker, second by Councilmember Bolin. Are there, are there comments? Councilmember Crable?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I do also commend, uh, Leslie, uh, and Troy and, and Billy and Jeff and everybody else that worked on it. Um, uh, I assume, uh, that others ask, uh, as many questions as I did, or at least some. So you were answering those, uh, which I appreciate. But I, I do wish that maybe, um, we would have been able to see more of the maps that you created that maybe met the requirements, but just not as well as the one that you presented. I also wish maybe we could have had a special meeting or something to ha- try to have more public input. You can only give, you know, an oppor- opportunity, right? And we have given, given them an opportunity, but sometimes, uh, it's good to have more, more than one or just, just keep trying. With regard to the map, maps that I would choose, um, it would not be, uh, map two. Um, I think the, uh, public map and map one, uh, and map one has, is the minimal changes. So only four precincts change. Um, I think it, it best keeps the west side and downtown representation. Um, I think the current map has good solid representation on the, for the west side and Ward six and seven. Ward, uh, now Ward six moves further east. I do think under, uh, map two, it will be difficult for residents of Ward one to feel in any way cohesive as it stretches from Veterans Parkway to I-55 on the west side. Also, uh, I, I do think, um, there is a, an advantage to have three alderpersons representing downtown, uh, to support downtown interest. Um, and, and just to kind of go back in history, um, and, and give out, uh, give a shout out to, uh, Kelby Compton, who always gives us his opinions. Um, the ward system was created, uh, in, in like 1980. And the reason it was created was for rep- was that, uh, residents of the west side did not feel, um, uh, that they were adequately represented on the, on that current council. Um, and I do feel we're a little bit at least, uh, going away from that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, Councilmember Ward, Crumpler and Emig.
Thank you as well for all the work that you've put into this. And I especially appreciate the opportunity for us to at least see, um, this proposed ward redistricting plan five, which I actually see as something of compromise, which would have been nice to have been able to consider more fully, in what feels like an often polarized, um, climate. Um, I, it was refreshing to, to have an opportunity to have a compromise. I do see plan five as, as the best option among those that we've, um, talked about at this point. I'm not supportive of, of plan two for some of the reasons that Councilmember Crable raised. We talk about how important it is to have, um, affinity within an, with an award. We talk about how important it is to have neighborhoods be connected to one another. We're talking about it with regard to downtown. We're talking about it with regard to the northeast side. But somehow, that doesn't seem to matter with the west side under plan two. I see plan five as an option to compromise and to come together and say, what's good for the northeast side, what's good for downtown is also good for the west side. And unfortunately, plan two doesn't do that in my view. And so I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Did I, so I called Councilmember Crumpler, right? Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with, um, uh, Councilmember Becker that I really, Leslie, I commend you for the process. And Billy and Troy, all of you, um, have done just an outstanding job, um, presenting these to us, um, these last few weeks. For me, um, I do plan to support, um, plan two. It, it's my understanding that conversations have taken place with west side residents and they have expressed, um, support for plan two. And I have to, to say, as an elected official, I believe it is the primary responsibility to listen to constituents and vote accordingly. And so I will be supporting plan two. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, who was next? Was that you? Okay, yeah, I think you were next, Councilmember Emig and then Bolin.
I always do that. Um, and, and I, I say this first, I, um, let me be clear, I'm, this is, this is genuine. I, I think that, um, in a lot of respects, all of the maps are really good, right? They meet all the redistrict, redistricting requirements. Um, the statistical difference is minuscule. And, um, I know that we've all, uh, congratulated our community member who submitted a public map. I think that would have been, um, well worth voting for. And for me, finally, the ultimate deciding factor is that, um, I do want to acknowledge arguments that have been made in favor of maintaining wards in the spirit of what is called communities of interest or neighborhoods that share an identity, um, such as some of our old west side neighborhoods. And I'm not suggesting that any map will forego that, but rather that I want to, um, amplify voices that I, I recognize as legitimate in this community. And as a representative, I think that's one of my roles to, um, to communicate that. And I think the, uh, the minimal change, map one, the current structure, it does allow for good representation across all of Bloomington while, um, maintaining all of the requirements. And that, um, it, it provided an opportunity to maintain that, that representation. Um, so I, I felt along with, um, or having studied the maps and considered it along with Alderwoman Ward, I thought that, um, map five was a great compromise. So I also appreciate the work that you did on that. Um, so I will not be supporting map two this evening. Thank you. So I will not be supporting Map Two this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. As far as Ward Seven goes, Ward Seven is picking up a precinct to the south, still on the West Side. And Precinct Seven is primarily commercial industrial, so that's not really residential. So the integrity, I believe, on the West Side is is the same or hasn't changed very much. And in relation to the stretching of Ward One to the East Side, I would like to remind you that the State Farm headquarters are located in, I believe, Precinct Twenty-One. So again, a lot of this stretching has to do, it's not related to residential, and that's the people that we represent. So some of the arguments I'm kind of, I don't really understand. And I also, maybe this is just peculiar toward two. Ward Two has neighborhood space, neighborhood space. So each neighborhood stays intact. Just because it's within Ward, doesn't doesn't mean that the neighborhood changes. You know, you might be hugged in to the ward, but the neighborhood remains the same. That's just the way I view it. And that's why I stay after the work, but my pay scale, I support what you presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we shall go ahead and vote at this point.
And just so we can clarify really quick, so we had a council member, I'm sorry. Yes, but I just wanted to clarify the motion. So the motion would be the proposed ordinance be approved with Exhibit A, proposed Plan Two, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the final tally is six to three. So the item passes, but I'm sure you please announce the names.
Yes, Councilmember Crable, Councilmember Emig, and Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Now moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Finance Director's Report. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for his remarks.
Very quickly, and thank you. This is the Finance Director's Report. He's going to be commenting to FY twenty-two and the first quarter of twenty-three. And I got that right a little bit. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Scott Rathman.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. This is kind of like the tweener time of year for us. We're not quite far into FY twenty-three because of the delay in revenue. You know, with sales tax takes literally three months for those to come in between the sale, the retailer remits to the state the following month. The state compiles the month after that, and then the state sends us the cash the following month, even with our local taxes. For the month of May, those tax filings aren't due until June twenty-fifth. And so it isn't until early July that we know those revenues. So we'll be doing one final look at FY twenty-two. And then we won't be revisiting that until the audit reports will be, which will be sometime this fall. The audit literally takes six months to complete. There's a lot of activity related to the public safety pension funds, the independent sort of bores that we have with the library and the zoo, et cetera. But tonight, we do have some some twenty-three revenues that we'll run through quickly and kind of talk about the process and how we budget those and track those and use seasonality from the last fifteen years to run those those budgets through the year, once we come up with the annual number estimate for for a fiscal year. So next slide, please. So this is just a re-review of the major tax revenues for FY twenty-two. This exhibit is only changed by eighty-one thousand dollars since last month, when Budget Manager Chris Tomlin presented. I will highlight local motor fuel tax did come up. Some of the local taxes were finalized with accruals, et cetera, related to the audit. Came in right at that four, basically right at that four million dollar mark, which is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars lower than, you know, where we'd been trending pre-COVID. We're going to show you where we're at with twenty-three, and it's kind of looking like that four million number might be what what we're settling in at for now. Next slide, please. General Fund total revenues, these went up a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars over last month. Along with the taxes, there were some adjustments to the charges for services of about fifty-seven thousand dollars out of that twelve point eight million dollar year-to-date number, just some adjustments related to final accruals, et cetera, in those service categories. Next slide, please. Expenditures, no material changes here as well, went up forty-seven thousand. I want to highlight the structure of this slide one more time. The year-to-date actual, you can see that there's a hundred and seventeen point eight million dollars in total expenditures. If you run down that column, a beginning fund balance for the year is twenty-seven point seven million. And then adding in the current activity, which would be the revenue, less the expenditures, we can't see the revenues on this slide, would be the fifteen point six million. But then we have encumbrances. So when we're talking about with ARPA funds and obligated, typically an encumbrance, there's been an authorization by council or there's a PO issued. So it's not invoiced in the system. So it actually hasn't hit our financials, but it's in the system as an encumbrance. And from a budgetary standpoint, we recognize that as an expense. So that's three point four million dollars. Now, that number has been included in the projection slash budget adjustments column. So that we, you can see the budgetary adjustments per category. So even though those haven't been booked, the second to the right column, that three point four million dollars been allocated in there. So just, you know, for those that crunch the numbers on these exhibits, the year-to-date actual total of one seventeen point eight million plus a three point four million dollars in encumbrances will equal the far right total expenditure column of one twenty-one point two million. And you can see that's about a hundred and five thousand dollars under budget. Other than that explanation, the total predicted projected reserves for the general fund are still right at that thirty-eight million dollars. It came up slightly from last month. Our targeted, you know, GFOA standards say two months out of twelve for reserves, that's roughly seventeen percent of a hundred and twenty million dollar budget, that'd be twenty million dollars of a hundred and fifteen million dollar general fund budget, that'd be about nineteen point six million. So really, really about twenty million dollars. So you can see, we're coming in really well for the year. That's about a thirty-three percent reserve amount or percentage, excuse me. Next slide, please. Just no material changes here. You know, we've focused on that solid waste number. You can see that it actually came in with a surplus related to, you know, the brush burner and some of those rebounding financials we've seen related to recycling. So next slide, please. So again, for FY twenty-two, no material changes from from last month, very positive year for the most part. Revenue is really exceeded budgets by tremendous amount and expenses held pretty, pretty solid for us. Obviously, there's inflationary concerns that we're looking at this year. You've seen some items come through council meetings in the last couple of months. You know, some of those expenditures are running fifteen to thirty percent up. And one, some of those items, we have control over, though, we could delay those expenses. We can buy half, you know, that's the revenues, though, you know, where we don't have control over those revenues. So seeing those revenues come in and continue to come in, which I'll show you now here in a moment, is really a positive thing for the city. So a little FY twenty twenty-three preview, just some revenue categories very briefly here. So next slide, please. Home rule sales tax. I just want to comment real quickly on the notes, says the city receives these funds approximately two months in arrears. Well, our revenue recognition policy is only backdate two months. We really receive those revenues three months later, and then we backdate them two months later. It gets a little complicated. But the the point is, there's a tremendous delay in the receipt of our revenues related to sales taxes. Far left column at the bottom, you can see for the year, we budgeted twenty-seven point eight million. FY twenty-two budget was twenty-two million, twenty-two point one million. Spent a lot of time talking about this during the budget presentations earlier this this year last spring. The online retail cannabis drove that increase. We use fifteen plus years of monthly data to kind of seasonalize our annual amount. So our annual amount, we use trends, we look at IML's estimates, economic indicators, that kind of thing. So we come up with a twenty-seven point eight million dollars, it's kind of a gross number. And then we seasonalize it related to our budget tracking, and that's what you're seeing here. And this is how we track our revenues. So we came in. You can see about the fourth column over eighty-eight thousand dollars over what we were budgeting. And that was up about a hundred and eighty-three thousand over the far right column. You can see last year, we had about two point two five million in FY twenty twenty-two. So very positive results so far with one month in FY twenty-three. Next slide, please. State sales tax, down to bottom, highlighting six point five million dollar budget for the year. FY twenty-two budget was fourteen point five million, so we took that up by two. You can see that we came in a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars better than our seasonalized budget there of one point three seven two for May. And this is up seventy-two thousand dollars over the far right column of one point four eight five from FY twenty-two. Next slide, please. Income tax, income tax revenues, PPRT, replacement tax revenues, they are puzzled to even IML, and I've been contacted by the county Benward, et cetera. You know, what's going on with PPRT and income taxes? They're just through the roof. There's companies out there that are really doing well. You know, in this environment, they have been in the last two years. So we are already, I'll just start from the beginning here. Far left corner, bottom corner, nine million dollar budget, eight million dollar budget the prior year. So we took that up a million. Year-to-date, we're four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars ahead of budget so far. Now, this is a little under the prior, but that's the prior years when they pushed out the IRS deadlines for tax filing. So it kind of pushed out some of those revenues into the next year. So we are doing really well in income tax revenues a year-to-date and replacement taxes, but I don't have that slide today. Next slide, please. Food and beverage taxes, this is always a good indicator of our local economy. You can see bottom left corner, four point five million dollar budgeted. We had four million dollar budget in FY twenty-two. FY twenty-two is coming in at five point one million. So it's coming in way over budget. So we feel good that the budget's four point five for twenty-three, eighty-nine thousand dollars over budget for the month. And then that's up about fifty grand over prior year. So again, a good indication of a strong local economy. Next slide, please. Local motor fuel tax. So bottom left corner, four point one million. We budgeted four million in twenty twenty-two. We just discussed with that major tax revenues for FY twenty-two that we are coming in right at four million dollars. And you can see in May, you know, we're about eleven point five, eleven point five thousand dollars under budget. We just straight line these calculations for local motor fuel tax. We don't seasonalize it. It does vary. And this is down thirteen thousand dollars from the prior year. May's activity. Now, this can be affected by late filings by, you know, some of our gas stations, et cetera. But this kind of indicates to me that we are really, you know, kind of on track or kind of stabilizing at that four million dollar number. So, you know, there's been discussions about increased, the favorable variances we've seen in some of our other taxes. You know, and so we can see that the local motor fuel tax is kind of holding that four million. There's a lot of discussion about finding more revenue dollars for for our roads. So taking into, you know, this is could be something council considers in future discussions during the retreats, et cetera, how positive our other revenues are doing. But this one, it's kind of stabilizing at that four million dollars, seven hundred, five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars under where we were trending at prior to that. Next slide, please. And then just to pat our backs a little bit in Finance Department, GFOA has a recognition program for the budget document. There's some very stringent guidelines and criteria they they use to degrade your budget document. There's, I think, I'm going to get this wrong, four to six reviewers, it might be four, for every fiscal year, we get comments from them. Chris Tomerland does a tremendous job. They were reviewing the comments, updating the budget document, you know, to acknowledge those requests from the GFOA or suggestions. And we've already received our award for FY twenty-three for that budget document. So I just wanted to comment on that as well. And then next slide, please, and we'll wrap it up. And just a reminder to the community that these presentations are located on the website, along with our budget documents are on the finance page. And then we do have, and I brought one with me tonight, we have the budget and brief document this year. We've expanded it a little bit. It's about six pages, whereas before it was a four, and that's online as well. So that's really a condensed version of the budget, gives some of the highlights citywide and for the general fund. So at this point, I'll take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Questions, comments, Councilmember Crable?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Scott, and congratulations on the recognition for you and your team. I had said a question about the FY twenty twenty-two and the salaries. I note that I think it's over, went over budget slightly. Is that, am I reading that right?
You are reading that right. So that this was some of the strategic additions, especially going into FY twenty-three and related to IT staff.
Right.
And other things.
And so my understanding, which is probably wrong, is that we're typically under, right? And for instance, I think we're still understaffed with the police department. So remind me on the budget, does the budget include like, say, a full police staff?
Yes, we budget by department, full targeted staff goals. And then in what's referred to as the non-departmental org, we do a vacancy savings offset to recognize historical savings. So for FY twenty twenty-two, we put a, like a two, we put a two million dollar reversal against salaries.
Right.
To acknowledge, but we didn't want to hit each department and force those departments into those guidelines. But we kept, we started doing this four or five years ago, capturing a vacancy savings, which is a common practice, but we just do it on one line item. So even though we had a two million dollar vacancy savings built in, you know, that we ended up with that four thirty-seven.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much, Scott. And again, congratulations on the award. Okay, next item on the agenda is City Manager's Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very brief, I've got two slides. First one, please. What's happening downtown? There are several events always happening, but we have brought some bags on August fifth. Saturday is on the square, August sixth, and then Bloomington's Pride Fest is on August thirteenth. Next slide. Downtown Dog Days, August first Friday is coming up, not this Friday, but next. And then the downtown farmer's market. I say this every time, but it's so true. It's extremely well attended, and this is a perfect segue into my one and only comment. Besides the slides is Bloomington made the top one hundred list for livability this past week. I think we are number sixty-four out of all the communities in the United States. And our downtown outdoor farmers market was mentioned as one of the many reasons why we made the top two-thirds of that list of one hundred. So it's yet another recognition for the community, truly a great community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And under Mayor's comments, I wanted to echo what the City Manager said about downtown and the downtown farmers market. If you haven't been there, it's, it's it just feels really good to see so many people out there. And in addition to that, I would say some of the concerts around the square has been, have been a lot of fun to attend. So I would encourage everyone to do that. Wanted to thank Mayor Protem, Donna Bowlin, for filling in for me on the eleventh. As some of you might know, my dad passed away. So I had to travel to attend the funeral. So, and it looks like we didn't miss a beat. So that was fantastic. And I want to also thank the staff and council members as well who have reached out to offer their condolences. So it means a lot to to be thought of in that way. And I think that is all I have, and I'm going to turn it over to our council members to see if anybody has. And I think that is all I, I have. And I'm going to turn it over to our council members to see if anybody has comments. Councilmember Becker?
So I just want to share a couple thoughts from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, which I now sit on. And I, I attended the first meeting since I joined that council last week. And I think people really need to be aware of what's happening and the good things that are happening in our community with all these people working together. In that particular meeting, we had the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, the Juvenile Council, as well as the Behavioral Health Council all together, talking about what we needed to do and going forward and, and how we were going to do our best to reduce some of the, the impacts of crime and violence in, in the community. And it also, there's a little bit of history that I learned too, that I think is very relevant to folks. This commission started as it was related to just prison overcrowding. But it then shifted to how do we prevent violence? How do we work together and how to reduce the recidivism rate? And there's a couple of numbers that I want to share, and I don't want to go too long. I know people don't want to hear a lot. But in a 10-year period, and this, this council gets all of its data from the Stevenson Center and ISU and Dr. Frank Beck, who is completely unbiased, right? It's just data. But in a 10-year period, there were 500, I'm going to get it close, roughly 530 juveniles that hit the juvenile detention center. And less than half of those later on hit the adult detention center. In a community this size from McLean County, those numbers are astronomically low. We are doing some really good things to take the people that got into the system once, went through programs, now didn't ever get back into the system again. And that's what we really want is violence prevention and, and support there. So there is some fabulous work going on right now, and I think we just need to be aware of all these groups that are working on it. In addition to ISU, we've got a doctor from Loyola that's presenting data and working with us on the the, the Safety Act that's going into effect in January. So talking about how you're going to deal with the bail issues and, and the changes in the system there, also to make sure we do that well. So there's a ton of activity happening that I don't think a lot of people are aware of, and I just wanted to share.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker. Councilmember Montney?
Yeah, I just had a suggestion for consideration for the future. About a quarter of our packet tonight, around 50 pages related to, to transfers at Lake Bloomington. And I understand that that process requires effectively a project within the city each time we go through it. And while I haven't gone back, you know, infinitely in the past, I'm not aware of, of anywhere. There's been an issue of contention that's had to be discussed by the council. So might this be an opportunity for us to look and see if there's a chance for these to actually be empowered by staff to handle and then only escalate to the council when and if needed for some extraordinary circumstance?
Thank you, Councilmember Montney. So Councilmember Urban, Ward, Crable, and Boland.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to do a really quick shout out to the WBRP, which means West Bloomington Revitalization Project, of which I am one of the board members, but they had the West Fest event over the weekend. It was a spectacular and beautiful event of many people in the neighborhood coming together without argument, without, without any questions and just loving each other and having food and games and excitement. And it was really an honor to be able to attend that event and participate in that event. And just thanks to everyone who came out and showed support for the event. I, I'm overjoyed that we could do that, and I'm already looking forward to doing West Fest again next year. So kudos to Kristen and all the staff there, and thank you all for coming.
Councilmember?
Yes, I would just like to acknowledge that tomorrow is the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and want to celebrate that fact and would request respectfully that within the next month, we could get an update on where our own transition plan stands and processes for, for lifting up issues related to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crable.
Thank you. We have another fun entertainment food type of event this Saturday, July 30th at Miller Park, the Cultural Fest. That'll be from 12 to 6 with performances all the way along. You can meet Disney Princess Tiana in the Kid Zone, boot trucks, vendors, and it's free to attend.
Thank you, Councilmember Boland, last but not least. Oh, no, Councilmember Emig.
Nobody is happier to have you back than me. I'm kidding. Yeah, I had the privilege to walk with the police through a neighborhood in my ward. It's the Tracy Drive neighborhood. It's off of South Main Street and Veterans. And you can check out the report and the photos on their Facebook page. They're always kind of entertainment with their, entertaining with their comments. But many of the buildings are actually condos, which means it's an opportunity for homeownership and wealth building. So I think that people may not be aware of that. And the apartment buildings are currently under new ownership and management. And I noticed walking through this past week that yes, the appearance of the buildings have improved. There are new windows. It will be much more attractive for people that want to move in there. The police basically said, and even the residents said, that the the monkey business has diminished over the past two or three years, which is really very good news. And the property owners are working toward family-friendly community management. The rent is affordable. It's less than a thousand a month. And here's some historic trivia. According to a long-term resident, it was originally built for ISU students off-campus housing because it easy access off, off of Main Street up to ISU and easy access on Route 15, or Veterans to either go to the interstate or shopping. So I didn't know that. I learned something. And this is going to be to Mr. Gleason. He's not going to want to hear that. We approved minutes this morning, or this morning, at the beginning of the meeting from Committee the Whole from February 18th, 2022. And it was the Connect Transit presentation. And in those minutes, Councilmember Emig asked about the status of the Connect Transit IGA. And I've been asking about the status of that every month for the past two and a half years. I want, it's been, it's in the hands of the town of Normal, and I would like to know what the holdup is. You don't need to answer this now, but I want, I want it on the public record that work was done by the city of Bloomington surrounding the recommendation from the Connect Transit Board to update the Connect Transit IGA. We did our work. It was passed on to Normal, and it sits. And I want to know why.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig?
I don't think the City Manager is going to respond. I just, I just want to thank everybody who supported me and participating in 20 Stars for Life, which is a fundraising program to help at-risk adolescents, high school students stay, stay for, for all four years. And I really want to thank Donna and Jeff for attending with me. It was a little more pomp and circumstance than I enjoy. But having good, good company made it worth it. And just a quick shout out to Public Works. A constituent contacted me recently about needing attention to an issue. And when we were speaking on the phone, he said, you know, those guys came out and fixed a water main break. In the dead of winter, it was only eight degrees. I felt terrible for them. They were so nice and good about it, just in, in the spirit of wanting to call out the things that work. That's really positive. And I can't wait for the next Saturday concert in, on the Museum Square.
Some people have too much fun. Okay, I, I think that is enough fun for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move second.
Okay, all those in favor sitting far by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.